I'd like to welcome everybody to our September 4th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Welcome. First item we have on the agenda is our consent agenda, which amounts to the approval of our minutes. Commissioners, y'all have had these a few days. Any changes that need to be made? If so, let us know. If not, I'll accept a motion to approve as is.
I move we accept the consent agenda minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Moving forward, all business, SD 2218 Greenfields. We need requests on a one-year extension for a preliminary plat approval.
So this is just the, as you said, an extension for the preliminary approval. They are currently and actively under construction of the site. Just the timeframe, they had some delays with their preliminary approval from the beginning with the roundabout completions and some infrastructure that was outside of their control. We extended the preliminary then for a ninety, for a year from that point. This extension is now hazard actively under construction. We have no issues extending this.
This is their second extension.
Technically, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any concerns with that? We always give one carte blanche. We've never really had issues with seconds, as long as they're actively working on it.
I move we grant a one-year extension to, for Ashford Court, SD 25.13.
I've got a, 22.18.
I'm sorry, 22.18.
I have a motion to grant the extension for SD 22.18. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right, moving through, new business, SD 2513 Ashford Court subdivision.
All right, good evening. We'll skip over to that one. Peyton Rogers, City Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department. I'll discuss case SD 2513 Ashford Court. It's a public hearing to consider the requests of the applicant Jay Broughton on behalf of the owner, Acre Investments, for preliminary plat approval of Ashford Court subdivision. This is a nine-lot major subdivision. The property is approximately fifteen or five-point-two, excuse me, acres, located off of Gaffer Road Extension, and is currently zoned R1 low-density, single-family residential district. On your screens, the left, you'll see a zoning map, as well as an aerial map on the right. And I've got your preliminary plat, as well as a site data table and typical setbacks that we can refer to. Bit of history on this site. The property was before the planning commission previously last December to request conditional annexation to R2 medium-density, single-family. The planning commission made recommendation of denial at that time due to concerns over the compatibility with the requested R2. The applicant changed that request prior to going to city council from R2 to R1. Subsequently, the city council approved their conditional annexation with R1 at their March 24th meeting earlier this year. General comments for the case, the requested subdivision does meet size-width standards as per the subdivision regulations. All lots front Maddox Lane, a proposed local street with a compliant fifty-foot right-of-way width. Setbacks illustrated on the preliminary plat do comply, however, there are some notes on the preliminary plat that will need to be revised. They incorrectly labeled the, some of the setbacks. Those will just have to be changed by the applicant prior to final plat submission. Sidewalks will be provided. Per the subdivision regulations, the applicant has also provided necessary access and utility easements, and all lots are within three hundred feet of a fire hydrant. As for utilities, I've got utility plan on here for you to refer to. Fairhope Utilities are going to provide electric, water, sewer, and gas. AT&amp;T will provide communications. Water infrastructure is going to connect off of Gaffer, and sewer will be extended north along the proposed Maddox Lane. The applicant did submit a traffic letter. Minimal traffic should, is expected at this development. No further traffic study was required, and stormwater is going to be catch, or collected through six drainage catchments and diverted to a dry detention pond in the northeast corner of the lot. One note here, the stormwater report submitted did not specifically state no adverse effects to adjacent properties. This is some language that staff typically likes to see in these reports, and would just require minor revision by the applicant prior to development permits being applied for. The plans do show compliant buffer screening using existing vegetation around that dry detention pond. City, of course, reserves the right to require additional plantings if that is not sufficient by the time roads are put in, and a wetland feature does exist on the property, but they are illustrating compliant buffer and signage along that as well. The remaining slides that I have mostly have to do tree and landscaping. This is the primary concern that staff has. To kind of keep it brief, the site itself requires a minimum of fifteen percent green space area. The plans illustrate, or indicate seventeen-point-nine percent. I promise that's the most numbers we'll get into, but staff calculates this to be a bit inaccurate based off of the plans that are provided. I'm going to skip ahead to one slide because I believe seeing this will be a bit more beneficial to you guys. But essentially, they're applicants calculating two green space types. You have on the left of your screen a green area, and on the right a preserve area. That green area doesn't qualify per those subdivision regulations, green space standards. It doesn't meet.
Which one doesn't?
The one on the left here.
Oh, my.
The smaller one, yeah. Let me get this laser pointer. This one right here. So that doesn't qualify as a green, green space type. It has to, a green, green space type has to front two different rights away. It has to have building facades fronting it. This obviously does not. So that can't be calculated in the green space area. This larger box here on the right of your screen that's labeled as preserve, they're calculating the entirety of that into their green space area, which realistically is not allowed. The subdivision regulations don't allow you to count a dry detention pond in your preserve space, nor does it allow you to count greens, like grassed areas, into that total either. So revising those numbers to subtract out that area, the green space area that's actually being provided per the current plans, is indicated in that darker green area in the top-right corner. So this is about fifteen thousand, six hundred square feet. They're required to have about thirty-four thousand square feet. So falls a bit short of that. I bring all this up to say that there is a path forward. The landscape plan, which I'll show you on this next slide, does show some areas as existing vegetation that's going to remain. That's highlighted in the purple areas of that tree and landscape plan on the right. If we were to count all of that into the green space area, they would come up with a compliant amount of green space area. The only issues with that is with the current set of plans, we don't have enough detail to say that that area complies with the requirements of preserve. I've included this previous landscape plan here on the right of your screens to illustrate what we're kind of talking about. Preserve has, has specific needs for a green space area. This plan on the right was a previous version of the landscape plan that was submitted with the initial application, and it is a bit more indicative of the detail that we would like to see in a tree and landscape plan that is calculating green space area. So essentially, staff would just require a revised landscape plan prior to application of development permits that illustrates something similar to this, showing compliance with green space standards in Article 5 of the subdivision regulations. Lastly, we did receive one public comment. For this case, a concerned citizen across the street has some concerns regarding the current vegetation that's along Gaffer Road and its visual importance to the community. They see a risk of damaging that through the reduction of vegetation, putting in sidewalks, things like that. There's also a concern with the proposed sidewalk being in a right-of-way drainage ditch. Just to point out a couple of things, the top-right image on your screens with the purple lines, that's their proposed sidewalks. Left of that entrance, you'll see it kind of meanders through the vegetation in the front. On the right side, it's just a hard ninety-degree angle into the right-of-way. We've brought these concerns up with the applicant, who is agreeable that relocating the sidewalk on the right of the entrance up into the property and allowing that to meander through the vegetation, similar to what they're doing on the left, would be more beneficial and in the best interests of the project. They've indicated this through a quick sketch image that I've included in the bottom right of your slide that just illustrates the idea that we're trying to accomplish on that right side. That bottom image is indicative of where the sidewalk will actually be placed. It's just a quick thing that they sent over to show us their intent to do so, but we believe that would address the concerns of the citizen. Lastly, we did have one revision to the staff recommendations since we are posting our staff report. So I'll quickly read through these verbatim just for the record, but staff does recommend approval of SD 25.13 Ashford Corp preliminary plat with the following conditions. Number one, revision of the final plat to remove surveyors' notes numbers two and three, and provision to separate data, provision of a separate data table, excuse me, detailing compliant front, rear, and side yard setbacks. They've already got it illustrated, we just want it shown in a table on the, on the final plat. Number two, provision of a note on the final plat stating that no structures shall be constructed in any easements without the permission of the easement holders. Three is the new addition regarding the sidewalk. They'll need to revise all plans to relocate the proposed sidewalk east of the Gaffer Road entrance, moving it off the right-of-way and onto the property with corresponding adjustments to the tree and landscape plan to ensure compliance with those green space standards. Number four, revision of the tree and landscape plan prior to issuance of any development permits to illustrate accurate labeling of the, and calculations of green space types in their area, as well as provision of sufficient detail to illustrate compliance with the green space standards. And lastly, number five, after installation of all roads, but before submitting for final plat approval, the applicant shall coordinate with planning staff to perform a site inspection for the purposes of evaluating the existing vegetation buffer around that dry detention pond. If it's insufficient, staff, like I mentioned, or the City of Fairhope reserves the right to require new plantings to bring that screening into compliance with the trees and landscaping ordinance. I believe Jay Broughton is present for the owner to answer any questions you may have for him, and then I, of course, am available if you have any questions for staff.
Any questions for Peyton at this time? Thank you, good job. Jay, do you have anything to add at this time?
Well, I would like to thank all of y'all for y'all's time and consideration. Just to add a little bit of insight into what Peyton, and we've gone back and forth discussing regarding the green space and open areas, we're more than willing to work with staff to make sure that's resolved, to get a product that everybody's happy with. In terms of the wetland feature, we really wanted to keep that in its natural state, to make that, you know, an existing feature of the site. We wouldn't have to disturb more than we needed to there. But other than that, we're absolutely agreeable to work with staff to get this all worked out. But if y'all have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the engineer while he's here?
I have one. The stormwater is a dry detention pond.
Yes, sir.
I guess y'all have done all the soil studies and everything, and you'll get parked there for it to dry out, or will it run off, or?
Yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll park into the ground, it'll also discharge after being treated back into the existing wetlands down the natural drainage path there.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I know in that area, there are a lot of grady soils.
Yes, sir. We got, we got the geotech report back, and it'll park.
Okay, cool. That was my only question. I just, when I saw that on Gaffer, I was like, what?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the engineer while he's here?
Right.
Thank you, Jay.
Hey, thank you.
So basically, Peyton, you're saying if we had a, if the, if there are no issues with the subdivision and the commissioners are happy letting the staff work out the green space and the landscaping, you know, have this quoted, the staff recommendation covers that all right if somebody made a motion to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Correct.
We wouldn't need to add anything else about green space or landscaping incorrect.
Correct. It would just be subject to staff recommendations presented at today's meeting, because we do have that additional item, number three, that was not in your staff reports.
Maybe just clarify, subject to staff, conditions one through five, or staff recommendations one through five, just so the record's clear.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, commissioners, any questions? We have the engineer and staff here.
I have two quick questions. One for Mr. Broughton. There's a note on the plat that they showed that says it's located in the airport overlay district, and that's like way south of where we are, so let's make sure we get that off. One, the other, the other condition, condition two, no structure shall be conducted in any easement without permission. The only easements that it shows on the plat are the fifteen-foot drainage easement at the front of the lot, and I was looking in notes, I didn't see anything about a halo easement. Is there supposed to be something there? Okay.
There's a likely point to be a pedestrian access easement.
Gotcha.
For the sidewalk in the front.
Okay.
But, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's any other easements needed or required on this one.
I was thinking about side yards and accessory buildings and that kind of stuff that we norm, that we run into a lot, and I didn't know if there was anything that was intended for that.
Was that correct? Is there any other easements that I'm forgetting? Okay. No, we, I was going to bring up the pedestrian access easement, but other than that, no, sir.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Open it to public hearing.
Excuse me. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I apologize. We have the engineer here. If you have any questions, would anybody wish to speak to this item? No one wants to go in twice? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Got paper? Any readings?
I move we approve SD 25.13 Ashford Court preliminary plat, subject to staff conditions one through five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve SD 2513, subject to staff recommendations one through five. Any further discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Hunter, are we going to take all of these, these next couple items individually?
Yes.
Okay, all right. SR 2504 Rock Creek Commercial.
So as you lose tune, you see on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a subdivision, a four-unit multiple occupancy project, both for the same, same property. So I will go through these slides, and if there are any questions, we'll refer back to it, we'll go through for each case on those. The request of the applicant, Chris Leib, on behalf of the owner, Averna LLC, for a site plan approval of a Rock Creek commercial. The property is approximately two-point-two-three acres and is zoned a planned unit development or a PUD. It's located on Rock Creek Parkway, just east of US 98. On the screen, you'll see it's just, just past the existing bank when you pull into the Rock Creek area on Rock Creek Parkway. On the left is a zoning map, on the right is the aerial. Call to your attention, there are currently three parcels that are reflected. The two parcels that are mostly rectangular on the left side will become, as a condition of approval, combined into one parcel if everything goes through. On the screen is a copy of the site plan. It is a proposed twenty thousand square foot building, proposed with one unit of ten thousand square feet on the second floor, with the other three units possibly on the bottom floor. Some elevation views, the exterior is brick with second-floor balconies, columns underneath the north elevation on the bottom of that. With the topography of this site, it does allow for some parking to be underneath the bottom. They're utilizing that topography to have some storage for parking underneath the building. The landscape plan, we have the landscape buffering along the perimeter of the property. The northeast corner is some wetlands that is being completely left alone and actually a large, large area of greens, green area open space that is not being touched with any type of development that slopes back towards Rock Creek. An enlargement of the landscape plan, draw your attention to the right side of the screen, there is a pedestrian set of stairs or bridge that will go from Rock Creek Parkway to allow some pedestrian connectivity to this development to get out to the existing sidewalk on Rock Creek Parkway. They're utilizing the existing ingress and egress easement off of Rock Creek Parkway, so there will not be any additional curb cuts for that. Some general comments was the Rock Creek PUD was adopted in the early 90s, has been amended several times, has had several subdivisions, re-subdivisions. Part of Rock Creek was residential, part of Rock Creek was commercial. This portion up front, the commercial aspect of the subdivision. The last revision that affected this particular property, built the existing building, the bank on Lot 1, which included drainage for all three lots. The proposed project, as I mentioned, combines lots two and three of that, and the shared driveway is still being utilized. The building's two-story, parking underneath. Their traffic study was not required. The shared drive, like I said, will be utilized. There is ninety-one parking spaces are provided and required. Part of the parking is underneath the building. Talked about the connectivity with the sidewalk. The existing drainage patterns are not being changed. It's tied into the existing drainage. Drainage will be reviewed, and we'll go into more detail during the subdivision case at 2514. No issues with the proposed lighting plan, the mechanical equipment. The building drops off towards the rear, and it's located on the lower roof and not visible from the street. The dumpster location is garbage collected in the northeast corner of the property. Mentioned the landscape buffering has been revised per the city's horticulturalist comments and meets our requirements. Signage will be reviewed as an additional sign permit. The utilities have been reviewed and approved by the appropriate providers. No upgrades are required. ADA requirements per the architect are met at the time, at the time, right now, and will be reviewed at time of building permit. We talked about the existing wetlands on the east side of the property. There are wetland buffer signs will need to be placed during the, for the MOP requirement of that. We will need a wetland delineation, and we'll go into more detail again on that MOP case for that information. With it, we have three conditions. Staff recommends approval with conditions of SR 2504 Rock Creek Commercial. One, a replat is completed combining the property together. Condition two has been slightly revised from what was in the staff report, and that's to revise the site plan to reflect the wetland buffer signs at the wetland buffer line and not the wetland line according to a wetland established by a current wetland delineation. And approve, condition three is approval of SD 25.14 Rock Creek Commercial MOP. We have a representative with Leib Engineering here, along with the applicant, to answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff.
Any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question.
We'll have a public hearing after the engineer speaks, and he can come up and give your name and address and ask any questions you'd like, and I'll list them down, and we'll call the staff or engineers back up at that point.
And this is the site plan review, not a public hearing. The MOP case has a public hearing.
Okay. In that case, we'll have on the next, the very next item, we'll have the public hearing, excuse me. All right, somebody from the engineer wish to speak to this item?
I'm Noah Byrd with Leib Engineering. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for the engineer at this time?
I have, the residents in Rock Creek have some concern about traffic. There's about seven hundred families or so in Rock Creek, Eastern Rock Creek and Sandy Ford, all of them probably have two cars. During the morning rush hour, several hundred cars are trying to exit Rock Creek on a one street, on one-lane road. When this project is built, there'll be maybe ninety or so cars coming into Rock Creek on one teen, one, one-lane road, immediately attempting a left turn across those hundred or so cars exiting Rock Creek on Rock Creek Parkway. I think a traffic engineer ought to take a look at that situation to see if any modifications to that road are required to address what I see as a very serious traffic problem. The cars coming into Rock Creek during that rush hour could easily back up, since it's a one-lane entrance, could easily back up out onto 98 and cause traffic jams out there also.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely look into that.
All right. I would like to make that as an additional condition to the approval, that a traffic engineer examine the entranceway to Rock Creek and its impact, the impact this project will have on that, to see if any modifications to that roadway are required to address that situation.
I can't add that, but you can make that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
So when we get to the motion part, think of what you want to do.
Thank you.
And it's okay to put that on the, the site plan review, but that would also be something we, we probably want to make sure the MOP, the subdivision, has those technical standards. So it's the next item on the agenda if we want to make the motion on that case.
Yeah. Since I'm not going to open the public hearing, do you want to just explain to the audience real quick the difference between the SR and the SD?
Sure. In the City of Fairhope, an MOP is a multiple occupancy project that has certain reviews under the subdivision regulations. Those typically look.
They can't hear you in the back.
They can't? An MOP is a, a project review based on the subdivision regulations of the City of Fairhope. It is the more technical reviews, the drainage, the utilities, those sort of things. That is the next item on the agenda. This is a site plan review, which is a function of the zoning ordinance that looks more at the building, the style, the landscape, sidewalk connectivity, and those sort of things. The site plan review is actually the final authority, is the city council. So planning commission will only make a recommendation to the city council for the site plan review. They are the deciding factor on the MOP, multiple occupancy project.
And in this case, the site plan review, if it gets approved, but it's, if the subdivision doesn't get approved, then it, then it's irrelevant.
That's right. And that was that last condition, I think Mike read out. It's condition, because that will move forward, and there will be another meeting and, and a chance to hear anything at that meeting as soon as we advertise that. That's probably not the next, I mean, not, not the next meeting, but not advertising, but it probably will not be the next city council meeting, but likely the following, so 22nd.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the engineers or for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion for SR 2504.
I move we recommend the city council approval of S, SD, what is this? SR 25.04 Rock Creek Commercial, subject to staff, conditions one through three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay? All right, next item on the agenda, SD 2514.
So we have case 25.14. This is a four-unit MOP. It's a public hearing for the four-unit multiple occupancy project. Property is zoned planned unit development, approximately two-point-two-three acres, and is located on Rock Creek Parkway, just east of US 98. On the screen is the zoning map and the aerial. Preliminary plat on your screen now with the site data table. Again, there are ninety-one proposed parking spaces, and you can see the area to the, large area to the right that is being left alone is part wetlands, part buffer, and then a large area of, of grassed area that will not be touched. Zoomed into the site plan, and then if there's any questions while I'm going through this, please, please don't hesitate. Again, the description for Rock Creek, a little bit of the history from when it came through. In the utility plan that was submitted and reviewed, no issues with the water, gas, or sewer that is out there being connected to that. The traffic study was not required. The trip generations per the subdivision regulations did not trigger the full traffic study. The existing, I want to talk about drainage, so the, you know, the existing drainage patterns are not being changed at this point in time. When the previous development that created the subdivision and the bank was created, it installed and took on the assumption for lots one, two, and three of that subdivision for what that drainage was going to be. There was a detention pond that was constructed in the common area on the east side of the property in the common area. The reinforced concrete pipe was put in the ground with drainage intlets to capture the water, to take the water there. They are tying into this system. However, with that, at the age of this development, when it came through, it did not have the requirement of the operations and maintenance agreement that we have now. that we have now, that has the property owner's responsibility to ensure that those facilities are maintained and operational. So with this approval request for this MOP, that is a condition that an O and M plan is signed by the owners to include the maintenance for that required detention area. We received a letter from the engineer stating that the drainage is sufficient for that pond. You'll see, we've added a condition at the end of this to provide a revised drainage letter. But for this, the engineer record, uh, will have to excavate out an additional four feet to retain the water volume necessary for the treatment, for the first flush treatment, which is one of the LID techniques. Um, and again, an O and M plan, we will have that on record, will be recorded with probate, so further maintenance of that facility will take place.
Has the detention pond been physically inspected? I mean, it's not just going off paper that it-
It has been-
I mean, it's been looked at to make sure it hasn't filled in and that it's got-
It has, that is part, part of what they're, when they go to excavate the four feet, they're going to be removing invasives. Uh, that pond today looks nothing like it did when it was constructed. It has not been maintained. There is overgrown trees, bushes inside of that. If you didn't know there was a pond there, honestly, I don't know that, you would know that it was one. So on the, on the screen is the existing drainage shown that is there with the existing detention pond. Uh, staff does have one question about where the outfall for this pond is actually located. It was not shown on the plans that were submitted to us. On the right hand of the screen, the red box is a close indication of where that detention pond is located inside of that common area. As I mentioned, there are wetlands that exist on the east side of property. They are well protected, well outside of where that buffer line is. However, the wetland, wetland line and buffer that were on place was transferred from the recorded plat that was done in 2001, or yeah, 2001 to 2013. So those are only good for five years. So we will need a, or an actual wetland delineation to determine if that wetland line has moved. Uh, potentially it's gotten larger, potentially it's gotten smaller even. But to pinpoint exactly where that wetland line is today during this review, we're going to need a wetland delineation to show that line. The landscape buffering, again, has been provided and revised per the city horticulturalist comments. Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions of SD 25.14, Rock Creek Commercial MOP. Uh, you'll notice there are six conditions. Uh, several of these conditions are more housekeeping items, not really any changes that affect the projects in general. Uh, condition one is a replat is completed combining the properties together. Two, an O and M plan is recorded reflecting the drainage and maintenance requirements. Three, provide a stormwater inspection report from the engineer of record certifying the improvements in maintenance to the stormwater pond have been completed. Four, revise the site plan to reflect the wetland buffer signs at the wetland buffer line and not the wetland, wetland line according to the wetland established by a current wetland delineation. Condition five, provide a revised drainage letter confirming the restoration excavation of the existing pond meets the current stormwater requirements of the subdivision regulations. And then item six is approval of the site plan, SR 25.04, Rock Creek Commercial by city council. And that last condition is similar to the other condition that these are contingent upon each other to be able for the project to move forward. And again, happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and LEAB Engineering is with us tonight.
I have a quick question. Do we need to add to number three that we need to locate where that fallout is?
That would, that would be done during that inspection report to make sure that the outfall is operating like it needs to be.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, but great question.
And just to kind of give you, a lot of times, we don't like coming in with that condition of finalizing a wetland line. What's happening here, that, there's a large hill there. So wherever it winds up, they're not going to be disturbing it. So they've got a wide margin of error. We just need to make sure, because the detention pond's in that area, that we, we do have an accurate update on that line.
So where, where does it discharge into, do you know?
Um, ultimately-
If we get into Rock Creek.
Is that direct, or is, does it go over some wetlands, or is there a-
I'm going to leave that to the engineer to answer on exactly. So I don't know exactly where that outfall is or what type of outfall is. I don't know if it's a built-up weir, what that is. I would rely on the engineer to answer that.
Yeah, so the, uh, the outfall control structure is going to be on the east side of the pond. It's a, I guess, a kind of a combination weir in it. It's also, there's a orifice at the bottom. Uh, it discharges to, uh, uh, Rock Creek. So I, I haven't actually seen the outfall point. I've seen the structure, but I haven't walked on the other side of the burn to see what that looks like. I believe, uh, the, uh, client, um, said that there's some riprap, so. But whenever we, uh, i- if we get approved, we're planning to get a survey of the whole thing and come, you know, make sure that the pond is adequately designed and that everything meets.
And we've had many conversations about this. I think the, the previous engineer designed this, and we have the calculations, the as-bilts. So all the assumptions we're building on right now are based on that. It was overdesigned at the time. So other than the treatment, the calculations are there. But it's so overgrown right now, you'd have to get in and really mess some stuff up to, to evaluate it. So they've got to make sure that those, first, it was actually built the way it was designed, and then it's maintained or brought up to a level of maintenance. So that, that will have some land disturbance activities with it. We didn't just want to go send people out tearing up things without having some oversight on that. So that, that's kind of the logic we've applied to this date. It will certainly have some, you know, making sure, multiple steps have been done, because I think that was built in 2006, 2001? And if you, I don't know if, Lee, you might, you weren't, were you here in 2001? The, originally, this commercial component, they had many other buildings, and this pond was designed for a lot more commercial space than, and traffic and everything that is there today. That was amended a few times and cut down to something similar to, to today.
Yeah, my, my concern would be the, the volume dumping into the creek and that there's something to slow it down and cushion it, because I think a lot of damage, you know, in the past has happened. Do, do, and, and this is a lot of increased impervious surfaces coming straight down into the creek, uh, so, um-
I can tell you the as-bilts we have do show riprapping kind of level spreader to slow it down. You know, going in and figuring out what's there is, is kind of paramount to making sure that that is available. Uh, we also have a question, even on the plat, I think there's a 36-inch HDP on the north side that really has no end. So, you know, there's some exploratory things, and I'm sorry, that was a, a previous plat, not what's being proposed today. So there's some kind of exploratory field work that has to be done to make sure what, the as-bilts we show are, are accurate and working, functioning properly. If there's any thought there, that, that was the intent of what condition three was to make sure if there's any tweaks or anything we need to, we're, we're happy to accommodate that condition.
Maybe adding in protection of the Fly Creek, more, more specifically Fly Creek, not so much the stormwater. Rock Creek, I'm sorry, I'm calling it Fly Creek, Rock Creek.
Rock Creek. Yeah, I mean, as most of y'all know, the, the city kind of partnered, I think, oversaw. It was right before I start, when I started, they were in the middle of it. There was a big restoration project that, that fixed a lot of the erosion kind of north of the bridge. So this is right where that's at. I don't think we've had problems since then. But we, we're as much invested in that working right as, as anyone, so no, no problem.
Yeah, we don't want to undo that restoration.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're okay with what the need, condition there.
Excuse me, have my microphone off. All right, this is the public hearing time. If you come up, any questions you have, I'll write them down, then I'll get the engineer or the city, whoever's appropriate, to answer those questions. If you have any questions, just, um, when you come up, please state your name and your address so that our secretary, Nancy, can, um, put it down on our, uh, can put it down on our agenda. Anybody like to speak to, anybody like to speak to this item? This is the-
Hello? Hi, obviously, I'm a novice to this process. However, is it my understanding that this project is con- oh, excuse me, Julie Hart, 114 North Creek Circle, Fairhope, Rock Creek subdivision. It is, is it my understanding that this project is contingent on traffic, um, studies and approval on appropriate traffic and drainage at the entrance of where it flows into Rock Creek? And taking into account the wetlands that are in back of that, um, that also have, um, as you would say federally and state-protected wildlife? Is it my understanding that this proposal is tabled until those are addressed?
Um, nothing is tabled at this time. Um, as far as the approvals go, um, what people vote up here is their own decision. But the staff is recommending that certainly the drainage and wetlands are taken into account. At this point, there is nothing stating anything, um, about any kind of a requirement for, um, a traffic ingress or egress study. Um, those automatically come up when you have a certain amount of parking spaces or units, they automatically come up. Now, um, we've had one commissioner that has indicated some concern about the traffic and, and has indicated that he may address that item himself in a motion, in which case, if he does, the other commissioners can agree and have that, as long as our attorney says we're on our, in, in our authority, then we can certainly require that from the developer. And just so you know, the ingress, egress has nothing to do with can the project be built or not. It simply looks at, are the roads adequate for it, or would the developer need to make some changes to make sure that we don't have people, you know, backing up on the road, i.e. Chick-fil-A? So that, that, that's what the traffic study is. So, um, that's a very good question that you've asked, but nothing is tabled now. But a couple of the items, the staff has certainly addressed. Uh, one they did not address, because it didn't meet it, but, but we'll see what happens as we go forward here. And we've heard your concern about that, certainly.
Okay, I'll wait and see what the staff decides. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any questions? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just, just to discuss that traffic study. Um, if, it's certainly within the rights to make any motion you want, and I don't want to stand in the way. My recommendation would put kind of some, let's, we can even talk about it before the motion made, to put kind of, some kind of scope on that. The regulations are not passed to do a full-blown traffic study, which y'all know can take months and have a lot of pages. And really, that outcome is more about off-site improvements, things like that. I do think there's some realistic concerns with the circulation and making sure traffic exiting is not blocking. That there is, there's already a, a cut through in the islands to turn in left into this property from, once you turn on to Rock Creek Boulevard. And there, maybe there's some striping and circulation concerns. So stacking problems, certainly, we, we should look at that and make sure the stacking, if someone does backed up, they don't affect traffic on 98. Um, that might be a good scope to take a look at, um, to, to see. But I, I don't know if the full scope of a traffic study is warranted. We, we have some of that, I think, um, with our public works kind of looks at some of those things with this, within this project. But I think it's okay to ask the engineer to, um, have, have their team take a look at those circulation issues. And then we can review what we receive back.
So how would we do that? Ask for a limited-scale traffic study? Concerned about ingress and egress, um, during the nine and five times when people are coming and going to make sure that they don't cross each other up? I, I mean, how do we specifically ask for that?
Um-
I think you can just add a new condition, a whole new condition.
Yeah, a- and, and maybe that's, um, you can limit the focus to something like circulation, stacking problems, um, keeping the flow of traffic, especially 98, from logging down. Um, theoretically, you, you do have the power to require a condition of certain hours that are not in the subdivision regulation if you think there's a different peak hour. But our peak hour, I think, accounts for morning and, that regular morning and afternoon traffic.
Would it, would it be more, and traffic study is a very specific process that has to do with very specific engineering analysis. Looking at it, I mean, I pulled it up on the aerial. You've got very wide islands in the middle of this. There's already a semi-turn in to go to the bank that's there now, but there's no striping. It doesn't tell you where to go. So would it be appropriate, instead of using the term traffic study, uh, a circulation analysis, or have them look at traffic going in? How many cars can you stack to prevent the eastbound traffic coming into Rock Creek? Looking at that, the bigger issue is going to be anybody who wants to turn out of this back into Rock Creek. There's not going to be a lot of room for that. But coming in in the morning, I would think, going eastbound, you've got room. It's like no different than a turn lane at an intersection, where you have a separate lane, where you come in and you stack to allow the traffic behind you to go. Is that-
And there's another alternative for folks coming into this property. They can bypass Rockwell Boulevard and turn in, there's another entrance north of there. Turn into the bank and come through that property. That was an, an alternative circulation that was approved when, when the bank was built. There is an alternative there that wouldn't-
Do you have any thoughts or suggestions on this? As far as, um, circulation study, how we ask y'all to perform a study? I mean, you, you understand the concerns that, that we have. I think the concerns are that people pulling in, if the traffic stacked up really badly past that, um, left turn, that it could back people back up onto 98.
Yeah, no, that, I, I understand the concerns, and, uh, I'm sure there's something that we can- I mean, I, I'm not super familiar with the way that, you know, traffic circulation study works. That's kind of out of my wheelhouse, but, uh, I'm sure that we can come up with a solution that'll, you know.
And we can come back, if y'all want us to come back and look at that, table it, and we can start, do the study and come back next month.
I think we can get a, get it a motion to where the staff would be, we'd be comfortable with staff on that, speaking for myself.
I'd like to add something into, as far as just the stormwater. We're focusing on the stormwater runoff, but the, the outflow and the, a little more direction of the protect, protection of Rock Creek and the work that we've done, I don't know, um-
I think you make the motion, Holly, because there's two items that, you know, we, we all have concern with, the egress, egress, and then the water entering, whether a Gabion wall or what would be necessary to slow down the velocity of the wall.
Yeah, if you address, if you address that issue, I'll address the one on, uh, traffic.
Well, one person, you can make both, you can make the motion. I think, you know, you're concerned about the traffic. We also have that aspect of it.
Question on the, the drainage?
Yeah, there's a, I mean, I don't want to go out and have a land disturbance permits and potentially have a site disturbed for months without, removing the vegetation so they can get in there and evaluate it, and then have a site disturbed right there. I think that's more of an impact, or a potential impact on Rock Creek.
There's a challenge doing all that work without any type of an approved project.
Yeah.
The fact is, they're not going to get a CO unless the city is satisfied and the engineers are satisfied.
are satisfied that the drainage is right.
Yeah, we've got the staff recommendation, we're just talking about two items. One is that the ingress egress is looked at carefully to staff satisfaction. And the other is that the velocity of water hitting Rock Creek is addressed so that we don't blow, blow that area out. If somebody can make a motion adding those two items, they'd have my support on it.
And can I just add? I think that we have plenty of room to, you know, add in energy dissipators or something to slow down the water. I don't think that'll be a problem at all. It'll be something that we'll, you know, design once we get, you know, more survey and more information, but it, I do not believe it'll be an issue, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners? Sir?
I'd like to move to have the commission recommend to the City Council for approval. Nope. This is ours approved? Okay, that's not, I recommend approval of SR 25.14, Rock Creek Commercial, subject to Staff Recommendations 1 through 6, plus the additional recommendation that a certified traffic engineer review the ingress egress from Rock Creek during rush hour to see if any modifications to that entrance area are required to address potential congestion problems.
Velocity, water entering Rock Creek.
And, okay, and a, would this be another added? Okay, and the additional of item eight, to address the velocity of the stormwater exiting the retention pond into Rock Creek.
Perfect. So I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations for SD 2514, plus two additional items, seven being a traffic engineer to look at the ingress egress during rush hour, and also that staff is, that staff reviews and is, and that the velocity from the water exit to Rock Creek is addressed. I messed the last one up.
Is there a second?
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion?
What I would, what I would just ask for clarification first, this is case number SD 25.14.
Twenty-five.
He said SR.
Correct, and it's the Rock Creek MOP, so that would be what the basis for the motion is. Separately, I want to clarify for your added conditions, seven and eight, is that subject to the satisfaction of staff?
Yes.
If they're, if they meet with staff and hit seven and eight, those two added conditions to staff's approval, then it can move forward as approved.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any more further discussion? We've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Cindy, I hope you can clean up my lack of articulation.
Luckily, there's a recording of it, so.
Thank you. Please delete it. All right, next item on the agenda is SD 2515, and this is Ross Givens Office Building.
Good evening. So it's a public hearing to consider the request of the applicant, Chris Lee, with Lee Engineering, on the behalf of the owner, G Real Estate LLC, for preliminary plat approval of Ross Givens Office Building, a four-unit, multiple occupancy project. The property is zoned M1, light industrial district. It's approximately half an acre and is located on Nichols Avenue, just east of Greeno Road. On the screen, the left side is our zoning map. On the right side is the aerial. You'll see that behind this property, to the south side, the southwest corner is a residential zone property. On the east, southeast corner is another commercially zoned property, another commercially zoned property. The appropriate buffering has been applied. The screen is the site plan. Parking is on the side and to the rear. Drainage is located to the rear of the lot. The property is proposing four office units. It provides the required parking, connectivity, buffering. Garbage collection will be rollout cans, with cans stored at the southeast corner of the building. The utility plan was submitted and reviewed by the appropriate providers. There are no utility upgrades required. The parking, a traffic study was not required due to the trip generation. Eighteen parking spaces were required. Twenty spaces are being provided. We do require that any spaces above the required is made out of an impervious. This entire parking area is all impervious, except for the driveway apron at the right of way. The drainage has been designed to exceed the 100-year storm event. The site utilizes a bio-retention swell, providing detention, infiltration, and treatment of the stormwater runoff. The downstream effects are reduced. Landscape buffering has been provided. We do have a waiver to allow the 20-foot required buffer along Nichols Avenue to count towards the green space requirement. And the landscape plan is on the screen, and we can come back to it for reference if needed. You'll see along Nichols Avenue is that 20-foot. Nichols Avenue, per our tree ordinance, is one of the roads that has a required 20-foot landscape buffer. We're requiring, got the required trees on the east side and trees used inside of the detention area for that.
Can I just add one thing there, just to kind of give a little foreshadowing of subdivision regulations amendments? Try to coordinate all of our policies together. That tree buffer is just a technicality, I think, but we want to make sure that's in the green space table. And I think the tree commission that wrote that ordinance, I think even called that kind of a preservation area to manage, make sure those certain streets within the city have a buffer and landscape in front of the properties. So it's just not in our current green space table. So out of abundance of caution, we recommended a waiver for that one until we get the ordinance amended.
Yep. And per that section, the table that is in our subdivision regulations for the green space is to allow that area adjacent to Nichols to be used as a natural green space type, with the property itself only being half an acre, fronting on one rights away, disqualifies most of the possible options that are listed in that table for one green space categories and types. As we mentioned, staff does support the waiver request to allow that as a natural green space type, as this particular site size and location does not allow the project to meet the specificity of Table 4-1. So waiver recommendation, we will vote on these separately with a waiver recommendation and staff recommendation for the project itself. For the waiver, staff recommends approval of the waiver request to allow the landscaped area adjacent to the right of way to count as a natural green space type and be utilized for the green space. Staff's recommendation for the project is approval with conditions of SD 25.15, Ross Givens Office Building MOP. One is the planning commission approval of the green space waiver, and then two is an O&amp;M plan is recorded reflecting the drainage and maintenance requirements. Be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and Lee Engineering is with us here this evening and can answer any questions you may have for them as well.
I've got a question. So we allow offices in our M1 zoning?
Yes, sir.
And what if they decided they want to put a retail, like, they decided they wanted a retail spot?
I don't believe retail is allowed in M1, so that, their business license would be denied.
What about like a restaurant?
A restaurant is allowed per special conditions of the M1 zoning section, as long as there is some type of element of kind of a farm-to-table type concept. There's specific requirements in that M1. That was a, actually a zoning change that was made in about 2019 to allow certain types of restaurants inside of M1.
Yeah, I just, I think this meets everything, but, you know, my concern of this is I just, this Nichols really concerns me as we put in, I mean, I've got no problem with the offices there, I've got no problem with retail there, you know? I love going to the brewery and playing trivia till they tell me I'm talking too loud, and, you know, then I go outside. But my concern is just, you know, we allow these businesses, and we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights, the streets narrow, we don't have right-ofways, we don't have ditches, you know, and people walk in and out. And if this thing decides, hey, we're gonna put somebody in here that's gonna sell coffee and grind coffee, therefore, they can take, you know, one unit and grind coffee in three units and have it, you know, be a sure enough restaurant, open at breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Right. I'll tell you with the sidewalk comment, they are providing the required sidewalks along the front for this section of the property, you know, as.
And I'm really glad that you're doing that, but I'm just saying, just the rest of the properties where, you know, you can't get sidewalks and don't have sidewalks, and, you know, people are parked at, you know, many storages across the street, walking through ditches without, you know, streetlights at night. It just, it just concerns me that, you know, M1 is set up for 18-wheelers and, you know, you don't want a lot of ditches and sidewalks, and then to be able to back in and out and load up the back of their trucks and, and.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, that actually, you said special conditions, that's a term used twice in our zoning ordinance, so that actually does go to the Board of Adjustment for Approval for any restaurants? And there is public hearings and all, so those reviews.
I understand, but we kind of backed, we kind of backed into it after people put them out there, and we're like, oh my gosh, these are here, and we're too nice to shut the businesses down, and so we changed the rules to allow what was, you know, already there. And it just concerns me as we see, you know, more and more, if it's really a M1, I just, I just wanted to speak my piece, and I've spoken, and I think it meets the requirements as they're written, but I just wanted to, you know, throw that out, and I am glad that at least we have the sidewalks there.
Yes, sir, that was a, that was a long discussion we had with the applicant on the importance of the sidewalks being, being placed out there where they were, and we do have that connection all the way across the front to hopefully, you know, connect Nichols all the way down. There are a few areas along Nichols that has sections of sidewalk that we hope to, you know, eventually that be connected all the way down to get to Greeno, all the way down to Booth and Troyer Booth Road.
Any other questions for staff?
It'd be interesting, I've not, have you read an O&amp;M plan for a bio-retention swell?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The, the main difference when you see those, they have the plant material maintenance. O&amp;M is really stemmed from the stormwater maintenance plan. So we have a standard agreement there for any stormwater. More commonly, that is used as the retention pond, but in bio-retention, they just add the plants.
They provide the plant life, so if there was ever anything, if part of that bio-retention area was to die off during a storm event, or a hurricane was to come through, and part of that was to be disturbed, that O&amp;M plant has the, basically the instructions on how to put that back how it was originally created. So that way, it knows what type of medium you need to put down for the soil base, and then what plantings need to go back in to, in order for it to still operate as a bio-retention area.
We actually keep the, we'll keep, put the landscape plan within that document that has the plant schedule as originally, and that gets recorded in the probate office of Baldwin County for, as a public record.
Does that include things like removal of invasives or?
Yes, sir.
Yes. If there are no more further questions, would the engineer like to add anything at this time? You don't have to, if you find, I'll go ahead and, thank God, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody from the public wish to speak to us? Thank you, sir. If you'll state for Cindy, your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Eugene Levert, L-E-V-E-R-T, and my address is 116 Spring Park Drive. I'm part of the Spring Run Place neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the good work that you do for our community, your staff. I appreciate the careful planning you put into the growth in our city. Our concern, we're a 34-home, two cul-de-sac committee, I mean HOA, that backs up to this property. I got a letter at my address, and I've talked to seven other neighbors that got letters, and our concerns are three: stormwater runoff, night lighting, and any night noise. Now, if it's an office building, there presumably won't be any noise at night, but Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your question about a restaurant. Is a bar permitted in M1? Is it?
I believe it is, but I will tell you exactly the process for review. They have a lot of uses, so.
Well, while he looks.
If they're brewing or making their own.
Well, we have the, we already have the brewery over there, and that's not a problem. Those people.
They're part of the industrial.
The brewery is there because they are manufacturing.
Right.
Right, we would be concerned with a bar because of possible night noise and traffic. So as I say, our concerns are stormwater runoff, we do have a problem with drainage in our neighborhood, we have a holding pond. I'm interested in where the holding pond or how the drainage will work in this property so I can report to my neighborhood about it. May I speak to your engineers after y'all have voted, just to get some details on that that I can relay to my?
They are, they are not our engineers.
We can't require that. If, if he'd like to speak to you, that's.
Okay, well, I just.
You can ask him and try to buttonhole him, but we can't make that part of a requirement.
That's fine.
And a bar, a bar is not allowed in M1. A straight bar, just a bar. Now, if it's incorporated in manufacturing, potentially, like the brew pub and.
Let me ask you, when you say you're concerned about the lighting, so I can ask the engineer when he comes up.
Sure.
Are you concerned about it having enough lighting, or are you concerned about light pollution and having?
Light pollution, any bleed. We were concerned about the elimination of the green space. It was kind of hard to make out with the diagram on the back of your letter that showed it. As long as we have a tree curtain at the back, I think that would make people in my neighborhood happy. But we would not want light pollution at night, in the same way that we wouldn't want noise at night from a bar or restaurant. And the stormwater concern is the major concern. Now, I heard the engineer say where he's prepared for 100-year storm. I just would like some details that I could.
I'm, work for the city of Fairhope. I am not the engineer. The engineer is the Lee Engineering that came up and talked previously.
Okay. Well, I would just like to be able to relay to my neighborhood. At any rate, I appreciate the ability to speak to you folks, and I appreciate the courtesy of the notice.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Would anybody else wish to speak to this item?
I guess I'll go a little bit.
All right, come on.
Good afternoon, evening. I'm Kenneth Williams. I live on Nichols Avenue and 208 Hawthorne Circle, actually, but my home backs up to Nichols. And the only thing, I'm all for it, whatever it may end up being, but in that particular area where you have the table, speed table already built, and then you have Hope Farm, that is a flood zone. I mean, I don't care if it drains to the back, it's never made it there because just a small rain and you're walking, and I've saw, saw people before, because parking is already an issue there, which you go there, so you know, it'll go over your ankle, deep in water, just during a storm, not during one of the H storms, just one of the just regular storms that we have around here. We don't say the H word this time of year, but.
Thank you.
But nevertheless, my concern is for the flooding. I already have a lot of flooding up in my area, and I have quite good drain system that the city's got in there, but it's not, I don't know where it's going, but it doesn't disappear very fast. And the speeding of cars, that speed table starts right before, I guess it's right between Tamara, Tamara's building, and then right before the brewery, you have the speed table, and then you got a speed bump down there by the VFW. And there's not a soul that goes down that road, it doesn't see how fast they can get between one and the other. And seems, I think you need some kind of, something else to slow down traffic in that area, especially, if nothing else, just somebody coming down there and sitting and watching traffic a little bit. I know that sometimes the police don't like to sit between two bar areas or whatever, or whatever you want to call them, but something has to happen with the speed, and then you start getting additional traffic. Office building, maybe you might not get more than 20 or so cars, but if it becomes something else through the years, then you could be filling that parking lot up and then some. So that would be my only two issues would be the flooding in that area and, and the speed and other cars.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You said you're on Hawthorne Glen?
I am.
He's those houses that goes.
Hawthorne Glen, too. I'm on, yeah, the circle.
So your, your garage actually faces.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Which is, we live out of our garage on that, in that particular area. Front of our house is super quiet. Thank you.
Now Hunter, just not saying I, I do or don't want that or agree with him, but is the, um, you know, doing any kind of speed buffering, is that in this purview of this project?
Uh, that we, um, you know, that's something when somebody's creating streets.
That'd be more of just a city thing, so your, your idea of, of, you know, we can't require them to put another speed bump in, we wouldn't have that authority and they would not either. So I just wanted to ask if that was even in play here and it is not. But I understand what you're saying, I drive in that way sometimes.
Mr. Chairman, there is a traffic committee that any, any recommendations for stuff like that thing can be, so if you just call City Hall and ask to be, I will tell you the difference, the distance between those two traffic, speed coming vices would probably not warrant another one in between those two, because you don't want to put them so fast and it's pretty entertaining to watch people hit that, that speed table.
They're pretty.
But I do agree, people try to see how fast they can go in between, um, but that would certainly be something that can be considered by the traffic committee and if, if anybody would like to make that, um, recommendation.
Possibly a speed sign, like a lit up sign that's telling you how fast you're going and watch out.
That would be between.
Turn the police department on that road, so I'm just coming up.
Sure. Yeah, you could certainly talk to them about that, that would be out of this purview, but, um, anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I will, uh, close the public hearing at this time. If you could come on back up, we've, um, if you could explain your lighting, I know that Fairhope has lighting requirements, but, um, if you could explain how your lighting will be shielded and also your stormwater, um, uh, where the stormwater is going and how that's designed.
Yeah, so the, uh, the stormwater, uh, the site has been designed to, uh, with a wash number 57 stone, so essentially it'll be pervious as it was, you know, uh, before we developed, uh, and then the bio retention swell is kind of like a over excavated hole and then you backfill it with a, uh, like a porous media, something that the water can, it, it'll store the water and percolate into the ground, evaporate or we're planting, uh, you know, plants that will soak up water, uh, and it's also been designed for double, almost double the, uh, 100-year storm, so if you were to have two back-to-back 100-year, uh, rain events, this, uh, bio retention, uh, swell has been designed to hold it, so.
In the, in the back, will there be some shielding up in the back as far as tracers that planned on?
I believe that there, we are planning to do like some more dense, uh, landscaping back there, but I also believe that this is one of those like nine to five type sites that shouldn't be much happening after, uh, you know, it gets dark, so.
Do you have a thought on that? Um, the photometric plan that we're given, our requirements are zero light candles at the property line, essentially, it's way more technical language, but they have to prove that, so any parking light lights, uh, lights on the building, anything like that is already vetted in a plan that's in the packet online. You know, I, I know we've had some conversations in other projects, uh, and reviews of when cars come in and headlights, you know, so there is a landscape screening on the backside, it will take some time to get there. So I think under the purview of the tree ordinance, I think we can look at requiring a fence back there. That would help the headlights, um, from the neighbors and in addition to the, the landscape screening. I think that's a allowance in the tree ordinance. If you would like to make that recommendation. But, but, and, and sorry, when we do an advertisement and the notifications that everyone gets in the mail, we have to do that to alert and we can only have room to put one plan on there, but there's, uh, 80-something pages out there online on the packet, the, the link on the website, and there is a photometric plan, landscape plan, everything within that, if anybody would like to look at those in detail.
We can't, public hearing's closed, but we can't require you to, but if you wouldn't mind, I know you're on the next item, but if you wouldn't mind, you know, talking to the gentleman who backs up there on the way out, you, you're not required, but if you, you know, just being neighborly, you could ask his concerns and sometimes, you know, that, you know, stitching time saves nine and, you know, um, you know, might be a nice thing to do.
Yeah.
All right. Um, commissioners, any questions, concerns or if not all entertain a motion?
Do we? You gotta have the waiver first. Yeah, I was gonna say, so we gotta do it twice? Gotta do the waiver first.
Okay.
I move we grant the requested waiver for SD 25.15 regarding the green space.
All right, I have a motion to, uh, for the number one waiver, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next.
Since the waiver was approved, there's only one current condition, just for clarity.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve SD 25.15 Ross Given's office building with the condition that an O and M plan is recorded reflecting the drainage and maintenance requirements as recommended by staff.
All right, I have a motion to approve subject to the remaining staff recommendation. Do I have a second? Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ZC 2506.
I don't know at which point to do this, but the applicant wants to table this.
I think this is the appropriate time. We finalized the agenda, we received a quest to table this, uh, annexation. There was a connectivity concern we had, um, and we're gonna have a condition on that, so I think they've asked to table that, let them discuss it, but since we've already formalized the agenda, sent it out. They want a table, they want a table, so.
All right, can you just weigh, you agree with that? Okay. All right, do I have a motion to table?
Can I ask a question about this?
If it's tabled. We, I'd have to open the agenda, then we'd have to vote on it, so, um.
We can, I'll, I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, it's currently on the next month's agenda.
No, not if we, not if they request it. They requested it's not, if we requested it is.
I move we table ZC 25.06.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any, any further, excuse me, any further?
Just for the record, that is at the specific request of the applicant.
Correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Uh, now last time on the agenda, we were going through our. Zoning changes.
Zoning changes. Zoning changes. And I'm gonna pull up 85 pages and show you every red line, they're gonna be here a while. I'm gonna try not to do that, uh, sorry, the, what I'm gonna try to do is summarize, give you a very short blurb on each of the main, uh, topics and then if you have any questions, we will certainly be here to answer those. Also, there's a public hearing component. The kind of process here, this is not the final approval of any of these amendments. You will be making a recommendation to the city council. We will leave this meeting and try to bring up any, anything into an ordinance. That will be advertised. And, um, up for the city council for final adoption. Tentatively, I think we did that schedule, it was around October 27th by advertisement, if, if everything makes it out of this meeting. So with that said, just a little background, um, and this is more for public, um, I think you all know, um, a lot of the background of these amendments stem from the comprehensive plan, um, input from s- uh, citizen concerns and, and comments, uh, it's conversations with our city council and obviously you commissioners and then staff evaluation and consultation with our legal counsel. There's future plans to this, um, you will see some things here, you're kind of like, what do we do? Drop the, drop the shoe, we're, we're proposing to remove the village districts that have long been in there. We want to take a step back on some things so we can move forward. One of the components of that is our zoning and subdivision regulations really haven't had a, uh, overhaul in over 20 years. So bringing that into much more efficient, um, processes are goal of ours, we're, we're requesting a budget item to start that next year. So regardless if we start that or not, there will be more iterations and we will be following up with even more amendments. This is, um, we need to get some base level things in first, so instead of getting stuck with a thousand amendments at the same time, we're gonna try to, um, take small bites at this. In general, there's 10 items, I'm not even gonna read this list, I'm gonna go through each one of them. We've proposed changes to the site review process, we just had one tonight, uh, right now there's three requirements. The, if any project over 10,000 square feet in commercially zoned projects or if there's significant, significant impervious surface, those will still require a site plan review. There's one for a mixed-use building when it hits a certain height. We're, we've kind of taken that out and we've added certain uses that gives more concern, so we've added uses of mixed-use building, which we've better defined, convalescent nursing home, automobile service station, automobile repair, recreational vehicle park, hotel and motel and entertainment venue. Any of those regard, regardless of size, shape, anything else, will have a site plan review that comes to you as the planning commissioner for review and to the city council for final approval. Number two, we have imposed some limits on impervious surface in single-family dwell residences right now. New construction, uh, changes to homes, things like that. There has always been a maximum, uh, lot coverage for the building, but nothing for impervious surface as a lot of the prompt for this was fruit and nut and, and kind of lots that have been there for a hundred and something years, changing from small cottages to, to larger houses, which is within their rights of the zoning ordinance, but then when you fill it up with concrete and accessory buildings and other things, uh, there's some significant drainage concerns. So we, we did imply, uh, impervious surface caps on lots. Uh, we did add two rec, uh, two new zoning districts. These are recreational zoning districts. Um, this is really through conversations with our environment award council, even when we were looking and, and, you know, big thanks to the city, because if you haven't been to the new park, you need to get out there, it's pretty amazing. But a lot of the conversations with that prompted these changes, it's been a while getting to, um, about putting parks in conservation easements and how do we do that? I know working with a single tax, there's, there's agreements, but this is just another method to, um, protect our recreational areas, uh, and, and we've defined those as an active recreation and passive, we'll flesh out more details as, as things move forward, because we would ultimately like this ability, the green space created in subdivisions can be zoned com- uh, as, as a, a recreation so that they are protected in those green spaces without the convoluted challenges we face as a city trying to get conservation easements and things like that. It would be a, a level of protection. We have made amendments to the townhome, the special, uh, conditions and requirements when someone is developing townhomes, subdivisions and how that lays out. We provided some clarities on the lot sizes and how to define that, it's a process, and we added a maximum density. They're really what most of the residential zoning had a max density, uh, in the use table, as you all know, uh, townhomes didn't, and that was always a, a contention for both sides, so, uh, we added that, that cap. Uh, there is special conditions required in the use table for multifamily apartments, but what those were, were a little unclear, so we've added those conditions, we've added a maximum capacity density on those and special conditions to cover buffers and locations and, and things like that, minimum lot sizes. Mixed-use buildings, this was one that we've, in our ordinance, we've got, I think, three locations that kind of discuss mixed-use buildings, um, and they had the, the same intent, but were kind of written, so we've created one section that covers this. The, so it will apply to standards that basically require the ground floor is commercial and to just turn, added standards to determine the maximum number of dwelling units. Uh, the only thing I'll say about this, it's not on the slide, we did add, there's a section in there for anybody doing a mixed-use building around the city and then there's another subsection for the central business district that does have a little bit more, um, it's a, it's a different flavor, if you will, we, we have a different desire there, so it allows, you know, there, there's drainage infrastructure, we know, and so we don't have the lot coverage and things like that, so we do have a special section within that amendment. Plan unit developments, uh, are, and really for general, we talk about this agnostium, but, uh, plan unit developments are a certain type of zoning district that is site plan-driven, um, a little harder to do. Its intent is to do something creative that you can't do with the basic building blocks in the zoning ordinance. 26% of our city is basically zoned PUD. Not all of those are meeting the creative goal that that's in place for. That's, it, it is a, a fact and I think one of the first things I did in 2019 is like, we need better requirements on PUDs, we made a bunch of amendments there. Well, still hasn't quite, quite got to the, what the message is in there, so I think some of the conversations there, we're requiring, um, a, we're proposing to require 33% of a PUD has to be commercial and it's constructed in the first phase, because we've got some great design subdi- or PUDs, but they go in and build the residential first, never see the commercial component, and then even the people that are there are like, we don't want commercial here. So it, it, if you're gonna do it, build it first and then, um, anybody that moves in knows what they're dealing with, they can see it. So that's the logic there, uh, on, on the end result, it has a high level of predictability. There is, uh, limited zoning districts that you can choose from as we proposed. So then, as we, as I've kind of said on the front end, the, I think, three comp plans now has really talked about village districts, commercial nodes, great concepts that we still support. The zoning ordinance has, uh, three zoning districts to try to meet those goals. It's been over 20 years since those have been implemented and we don't have one single property in the city zoned that, those districts. So, um, we are proposing to take those out, reserve the space and as we work through the next iterations, we will come with another solution to obtain those goals. Use table, I think, um, you know, Commissioner Cortina's mentioned this earlier, we are proposing to recommend, or we're, we're proposing to take out the residential uses in commercial. That accomplishes two things, we've got a lot of commercial being eroded because the commercial development is not the, it's not popular, it's popular right now. But that, that is a good base for good planning that builds our tax base so that we don't have to pass those higher taxes on to residents. So keeping those things balanced, we are taking those, uh, residential uses out of the commercial districts with one caveat, asterisk, whatever you want to call it, we will be coming back in future amendments. The one component we didn't get to in this one is how, a lot of the B3B, B3A, the commercial, uh, tourist resort type districts, um, that's how you got short-term rentals and things like that. So we will be editing, are proposing some edits to a lodging that will accommodate that in the business districts. That is not within this, but just to kind of give you the, um, the details there. The other amendments are just, um, I think we did add the special condition for the multifamily, the rec, uh, districts and what uses are allowed. And then finally, we had some general maintenance, you can see through there, getting some typos, the word principle is actually used, you can use it two ways and both are kind of accurate. We chose to at least be consistent through there, so, um, there's, there's minor things like that and then there's definitions. I do want to bring a couple of those to your attention and I really want to highlight one of them. Even if this moves forward, I do not recommend this stays in the same ordinance. That's a technicality. The probably number one thing we heard through the comp plan, day-to-day conversations is can we go back to the old way of defining building height? And right now that, that's affecting, you know, houses as they're getting built, um, and that's what we're proposing in this, this amendment. It, it just goes straight back to the pre-2018 definition. I do recommend separating that in a separate ordinance, if it works its way through, we could also look at other ways of defining building height, but why I say that, there is a pipeline of building houses that takes a little longer. But why I say that, there is a pipeline of building houses that takes a little longer. We want to give people enough opportunity to have those in. I want to say that in this meeting, so that if anybody, if, if we move forward to city council and they know that, and we'll talk about it again at city council, if there is anything in the pipeline. Uh, we want to project out an effective date that gets people a chance to, to bring anything that they've already invested into, to the, um, to us and let us know, or, or have a chance to get those accommodations. Uh, we clarified some definitions on net and gross density, um, how to define that. We, uh, we clarified, we, we referenced gross floor area a few times in the ordinance, but how to, what is the methodology for calculating that? It's always been a little, how do you want us to do it? There's, you know, depending on who you talk to, there's a different way. So we define how we want you to do it in Fairhope. We also added a definition for floor area ratio. Um, most of the time when we talk about density, we're talking and we're, we're using lot coverage to define what that is. That works great when you're talking about dwelling units, but when you're dealing with commercial, that's a harder, harder thing to do. So one of the common aspects of that is using floor area ratio. We're proposing that amendment and only using that in the mixed use building definition. That's the summary. The, if y'all want to talk about any of these, we have the, the ordinance in the red lines. If you want to open the public hearing, hear what any other questions are before we have that conversation, I'm here when you need me.
In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Any concerns about this, or I saw you nodding your head at the height, building height?
Good stuff. My name's Donald DeGuts. My home is one-ten Blakeney Avenue, Fairhope. I'm very pleased to see this, uh, this proposed change to the zoning ordinance to reflect the comprehensive plan. Very good. Hunter, thank you for doing that. The building height, that's, that's, uh, that's a great accomplishment here to give us a definition that reflects the actual appearance from the street, instead of the means and the ratios and whatever else. So I think you all recognize that, and that's great. So thank you again, uh, thirty-five feet from, uh, visible, uh, visible surface to, to the peak. That's, that's a great thing. I, I do have a question though, and I, I, I don't know what benefit we get one way or the other, but the comprehensive plan does talk about the nodes and the village centers and all that. Is there a conflict then by removing them from the zoning ordinance with their intentions? Is it to our benefit?
We're not really removing the nodes. We're removing one type of, of plan that we had for multi-family kind of mixed village that nobody has done. It's not the village center. We're not saying that we don't want, you know, commercial around the nodes. This is just, we had a special, um, seemed like a great idea at the time, but just nobody has wanted to try to use that mixed use development allowance that we had.
All right, good, because I, I mean, I, just so there's no conflict, whether you like it or not, one way or the other.
The biggest issue I think on that is that, you know, is, is the, 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 in this area, people really are very heavy on the residential. And, you know, you concern, get concerned about the whole downtown becoming residential when you see a lot of these PUDs that Hunter was referring to, that we have, you know, passed back in the nineties, and I mean, look at this one today. The PUD was passed in nineteen ninety-one, so here we are thirty-four years later, getting the commercial component for it. And that's, that's
That's great. That's very good.
That's not atypical, and, you know, I remember one of the commissioners up here, uh, one time when we, when we passed one of these, he pushed back and says, yeah, that'll be about twenty-five years. I said, what? You know, it was, uh, Ed Brunt. He says, no, they got to get the A I Bs, which stands for assets in, in beds, uh, first. And he was a developer and, and, and he was right. So, um, and so those are a few of the things that we've been, you know, looking at through, you know, came up in the comprehensive plan, and we've been having a lot of, you know, lunches and discussion, a lot of these things. We've heard feedback from folks like you coming in, especially about the building height. That's probably the most feedback we've heard.
No, no, I'm, I'm not being critical at all. I think this is great. Not yet addressed, though, in this, uh, amendment. Uh, I'd like to be a part of or have an opportunity to sit with, with Hunter on a discussion of traditional neighborhoods and the recommendations and the comprehensive plan about setbacks and such. So I, I hope that'll come up, and, uh, I'd like to see some changes there.
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you for your input. Anybody else wish to speak to this?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, city staff. Good to see y'all. Haven't seen y'all in a little while. Uh, my name's Melissa Hadley. I work with Goodwin Mills in Kwood. Uh, we are an architecture and engineering firm here locally. We've been in the area for well over thirty years, uh, through Scott Hutchinson, who is our, um, our office lead. Um, but I just wanted to be a voice and a stake, as a stakeholder in the design and development community. Um, so there are a couple of things that I think are, um, of concern with the proposed changes, and I just made a few notes, and if you'll forgive me, I have my phone, but that's because I have the, um, the text electronically. So one of the things I wanted to point out, and this may just be an error, but in the table, um, in, uh, table three dash two, it shows the R three town home district with a minimum eighty-foot width and twenty thousand square foot lot. That's not really a town home. Um, so I'm just wondering if that's an error or what.
That is for the lot that the townhomes sit on. If you read the next section, each condo townhome unit would be thirty-six hundred square feet. And I believe twenty-four foot wide minimum, but that's what we sent, off memory. So you, you're dealing with the lot that the townhome sits on, and then each unit within there. So when you look at the dimension table, it's, it's meaning the, the lot.
Okay, so that's just a little confusing, so thank you. Um, so I did want to voice a little bit of concern with the minimum, um, townhome square footage lot of twenty-four hundred, which is, it's going to be a really long, long, narrow lot. Um, so that's going to increase, um, it just will make it a little bit harder to develop. Um, so I just wanted to say the twenty-four hundred square foot is usually larger than most townhome lots already. So thirty-six hundred square feet is starting to get a little bit larger, but that might be sort of in line with the concerns I had on the multi-family. Um, things with the one unit per ninety-six hundred and eighty square feet, that's roughly five units per acre, which is really low density for a multi-family, but then with a two-story maximum. So I just wanted to ask if the planning commission and the staff had considered just working through moratoriums on multi-family? Maybe if you think you have too much, but this is a really sweeping change to multi-family. And maybe more than what is needed, or maybe harder to move back from if you ever wanted to start having or encouraging more multi-family development, um, condominiums or different things like that.
Yeah, and, and some of this is not just pure multi-family and density. A lot of this is if you look at, um, Hunter and I were looking at a, with another organization, looking at a park out on, I won't mention the name of the place we were next to, but we were out, uh, looking at a park that single taxes, looking at building out by River Mill. And, you know, we've got a townhome right next to it with cars parked all in the middle of the road, sidewalks everywhere. And a lot of what we've noticed is it seems like every time that we allow something with extra density to go in, that people are walking in the road, not just in the road, you know, because the sidewalks are blocked by cars. And so they're walking in the road and they're going around cars in the road, and, you know, this particular one is, um, I mean, there are dozens of those that we can look at, and, um, you know, this is not necessarily where this is going to totally end. Some of the things, maybe we can come back and tweak in the future. But one of the things that we've got to figure out is on these higher density items like that, what are we going to do with the cars? And that's something that, you know, there are a number of other factors at play there.
I think, um, because in the multi-family, it also bumps up the parking requirement to two spaces per unit, and then there's additional parking spaces, if I'm correct, for things like the pool area, if there was something like that, or the office area, whatever, so that, that should help alleviate some of that.
You increase from two per unit, and then you get such large, um, parking lots. And so much, you know, tarmac, and then on the other hand, if you limited it to, a lot of times on your larger, you know, you're a hundred and forty foot, I mean, you're a hundred and forty unit apartments, maybe that's not a big deal. Maybe the law of large numbers eventually adds out. But on your, you know, sixteen unit items with thirty-two parking spaces, it just doesn't seem to work. And those are some of the issues that, you know, I think Hunter's addressing there.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to, as a stakeholder in this part of the community, just say this could very effectively kill multi-family development, um, just because of construction costs and that low of a density for multi-family problem.
Or maybe it'll make it nice. I mean, you know, I mean, I, I've sat here for thirty years, and when we required sidewalks, we were told that would be the last subdivision we'd ever have. Uh, we required sidewalks on both sides. We were told it was the last one. When we required green space, we were told that would be the last subdivision we'd ever had. We required water retention. We were told that would be the last subdivision ever required, and, you know, they're still coming. But, and a lot of them nicer that way, and sometimes when things are nicer, you know, in Fairhope, you can get more money out of it, and, and everybody's happier.
Another one that I wanted to ask about was the freestanding maximum for retail use of eight thousand square feet, which seems a little low for a retail business. Um, if you consider that they have restrooms, storage areas, office areas, in addition to their inventory area for display, or, or whatever that might be, that, um, I'm just wondering why the, that was brought down so low.
That's really not a significant change. That's been in our regulations forever. There was an exception for about a one-block area around Greeno Road and, and, uh, Fairhope Avenue that had one, an exception for another that was Greeno Village. It was an overlay. I forget what the title was. That, that's but Greeno Road Village Center. It was really a little bit, so basically we removed that exception from that area, because we know what's in that area. And the businesses there are multi-tenant spaces, so you might have one bigger tenant or two bigger tenants, but that's kind of developed out. So everything else for the last twenty years has been, uh, eight thousand square foot unit or limit, other than those, that block.
And then, um, the last thing that I wanted to ask about was for Article, um, six, that's being reserved. Were you taking out those, um, specific districts? And I was just curious if you're going to come up with some more, more creative, um, uses like that and abilities to do, you know, as a designer, I like to see things that are creative and that are different. Um, and so I've always hoped I could get one in with these interesting village districts and things like that. Um, so I just wonder if we're, um, going to have something to replace that, because I noticed that you state that that, um, article is reserved. Um, so if, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about anything like that, but
I did, I believe, and during the, during my presentation, that is why we reserved it. We will, um, we, we are proposing an amendment or a budget item that will bring in some outside sources to help us get to some of the goals in the latest comprehensive plan. So, you know, anytime you're doing a bit major overhaul of the zoning ordinance, that can be a, a lengthy process. Um, but yes, that is why it's reserved, to accommodate another method to get to the, the goals of the comprehensive plan. Essentially, all we've had, I think, I, I can't speak for anybody that was here before me, but yeah, we want to do the village districts, except for, we need, you know, not thirty-six hundred square foot townhomes. We want to do twelve hundred, so they asked for a P U D. You know, it, it, and, and that, that tool is still there, uh, the P U D's still there. We're looking at some other, uh, districts that may, may come sooner than the major overhaul. So yeah, there'll be a future, a, a conversation about how to hit some of those goals of the nodes. But again, we've kind of got to step, take a step back before we move forward, is, is the, the general consensus of the last three and a half years.
Yeah, well, I look forward to seeing those new districts. Thank you all so much for your time.
If you have some ideas.
I'd be, I'd be happy to, because like I said, I love to see those creative ways. I always look for those. Um, you know, it's always a balance of, you know, making sure that things are financially feasible for the developer. And, you know, we want to encourage developers to do more creative things and so that, but sometimes restrictions make it so prohibitive cost-wise that they can't. So, but thank you for listening.
Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Taylor Hensler, three-five-five Patland Drive in Fairhope. I just wanted to cut, touch on a couple of things regarding to the P U Ds and the thirty-three percent of the commercial space that must be attained. And I'm not saying that commercials shouldn't be required within a P U D. That percentage could get to be overwhelming on bigger projects. Um, I'm looking at like, for example, the Harvest Green use projects, a hundred and eight acres. So it would require thirty-six acres of commercial space, which is ten acres larger than the whole public site. And for that to be required in a P U D, and then ask for it to be developed up front, could be a daunting task for a sizable project. So, I mean, I don't know if it could be looked at and smaller acreage have bigger percentages, and it goes down as you get more acreage to kind of make it in line?
Yeah, I, I think that an alternative, this is what the staff is looking for, is, you know, there are other options, such as come in and request zoning in different areas. And, and just go for straight zoning.
Harvest Green really could have been done with straight zoning.
Yeah, no, and that makes total sense as well.
The problem that we've got with the PUDs is, you know, they, they just come in, and it's just people, you know, nineteen out of twenty, you know, wanting smaller lots. And then a lot of times they come and they show you these beautiful, beautiful pictures. And, you know, look at downtown New Orleans, some of these areas where you've got a lot of density and houses right on top of each other, and they're beautiful, but then, you know, they show us those pictures, and then, you know, we get cheap old vinyl siding and, and, you know, garbage at the end of the day, and it's just not, you know, with cars parked on the sidewalks and, and so forth, and it's just not, um, you know, PUDs nineteen times out of twenty just mean we don't want the R three density, or we don't want the R five density, or whatever.
Right, there was nothing off it, just, yeah.
And, and that's what we're getting at. And this is a starting point. If, if it looks like it's a lot of pressure, staff could come back and change it to twenty, but
No, and the split zoning makes sense. It's just not seen as often as a PUD is, and I guess it's just used differently. But that makes, that makes sense too. Hunter, do you want to add something?
Yeah, yeah, let me, um, I, I don't have the data off the top of my head, but, um, in the last, it wasn't the last council meeting, the one before that, we had a little discussion with the council about some of these amendments, um, and it's on YouTube, so you can take a look at those. And I do, I, I think that's a good point. Um, a couple of our councilmen really wanted to, what, we, we need an alternative if we're going to take this away. So the, the deal here with a P U D is, you know, there's some benefits too to doing a P U D. So if we're going to do that and add the commercial, they're on board, but, but for the residential and having some more creativity, but maybe not as much flexibility, that was kind of a challenge that we've discussed. We don't have those, uh, solutions ready for primetime to present to you, but certainly in discussions on how we can accommodate some of those other goals.
Without letting secrets out, one goal would be, how can we have one subdivision have different sized lots on it without a P U D?
That was a main concern of mine.
I mean, could, could we do something where we take a few restrictions away, so that you have thirty thousand square foot lots here, you know, twelve thousand here, but it averages out? And those are things that, you know, sound real easy, but take a little while to kind of look at what other communities do. And are there some options like that to where, you know, we, we can do some things like that where it makes sense?
Yeah, because I, I mean, that's a concern, asking for a high-density residential when you're a little bit farther out, when you only want a portion to be that. It's hard to, to make that work with how this is, is currently drafted. And then, um, so I think, you know, I think more clarity will, will come of this in, in the future, as far as I'm concerned. Um, but then additionally, just one question on the commercial. When it says must be developed in fa, in the first phase, does it mean vertically, horizontally, or how is that?
Built.
Usable.
Usable. Right now, and, and I'll let you know, one of the challenges we deal with, is, well, a vision, the, the whole point of a P U D is to have a vision when you come in for the integrated components within that P U D. And right now, they require building elevations for commercial floor plans to that level of detail. And we keep getting, well, we don't want to do that. Well, that's what our regulation is. So if you want to apply for a P U D, then do that. That wasn't clear enough, so this is another attempt to, this is what we want to see if you're, you're submitting that. We don't need twenty-six percent of the city out there. Policing, and I'm going to use that term Policing, and I'm going to use that term as the planning director and staff that has to oversee this answer questions, it's incredibly inefficient for a PUD. Someone owns one house within a PUD that's built twenty years down the road. We have to go through, looking through four boxes of files. Ever, we, Rock Creek was here last night, or tonight, a lot of residents there. Someone comes in and can I build a garage? We got to go look which face, which requirement, look through twenty different ordinances and amendments. That's a very inefficient way to do things. So, PUDs are intended to be rarely used. We want our ordinance to be, ordinances to be, have zoning districts that create the building blocks to get to our end results without everything being a PUD. So, again, you know, this was two thousand nineteen. We did require a lot of these, these plans to get to the goals, required the commercial. It's in there right now, if you just read, read what is required. Uh, and, and we don't want to have to make a bunch of exceptions for that PUD. So, that's the goal.
Makes total sense. Thank y'all for your time.
And there are a lot of ones that you see, like, you know, on Greeno Road, I can think of one off the top of my head. It's turned out to be a really nice subdivision. But, but like, one of them was supposed to have, um, twenty-four tennis courts, two swimming pools, a kids' pool and a big playground that's not there today.
Right.
And, you know, and it's been...
Walking trails in before the development.
So, you know, we learn things, that's kind of...
Yeah, for sure. No, appreciate y'all's time. Thanks for the clarity.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Now, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any concerns, questions? Somebody willing to make a motion to recommend this to the city council?
I, I do have one question. In the, in the maximum impervious surface, thank you, we battle that every day with the house and a detached garage, the driveways and then your pool deck and then your outdoor living area, and there's not a stitch of grass to absorb water. My question is, previously it was like thirty-seven percent, but that didn't count roofline. So, it was technically thirty-seven percent of the remaining fifty percent that didn't have a roof on it. This looks like these percentages are all-encompassing, roofs, all areas, everything.
And I, and I will tell y'all, I mean, the biggest hesitation we had is staff recommending this one. I've done it at other places and, uh, that I've worked and it is a chore. It is not, it, it, we, when we look at building permits now, sometimes it's hard to get real plans to review for just the buildings that's being proposed. You know, figuring out accurate square footage for concrete sidewalks and things like that, it's going to be a chore. But this is all-inclusive. If water does not absorb, there's a definition we put in for the, uh, if you look at the footnote below table three-two, there's a definition of how, how we're, for the purposes of that calculation, how we're defining that impervious surface.
So, the question I have is, would we want to look at that percentage to, and I'm by no means, you know, I mean, I, thirty percent total is different from the thirty-seven percent of what was left. And, you know, I just ran a quick calc on a, on a fruit and nut lot. You're looking at, you've got maybe thirty-four hundred square feet of buildable space or setback space within that lot and forty-two percent's close to three thousand, so...
I am, uh, basically, I'm going to tell you the methodology. We, we looked at a lot of places and we took the lot coverage maximum of the building and added five percent.
Okay.
There might be one that was different in there.
So, when you're saying lot coverage maximum, that would be the calculated area within all of your setbacks that is technically your buildable area?
Yeah.
Plus five percent?
The lot coverage for the principal, uh, the, the structures, you know, is, is one calculation for the building. Your concrete driveway, asphalt, you know, apron, another, you know, projection off the roof, anything along those lines would be the additional five percent.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fully in agreement. I just want to make sure we got the percentages right because there are certain things that you can't do, such as a pool deck and things like that. You cannot do that impervious. It's got electrical grounding requirements. There's things that got to be done. But patio decks, driveways, certainly, you know, we could get pavers, we could get crushed stone, we could do all kinds of things with that. But getting accurate plans to review is going to be a chore.
And there's certainly some, um, you know, the, the, talking to some folks that've had to do this, actually being, working for cities that required it before, you know, the, the challenge there is sometimes it, it requires some design changes.
Right.
You know, with the impervious surface, we really want the pool and it's got to be concrete here, well, maybe that means this bump out you got that's twenty-seven foot long and two feet in the setback has to go away. Or, or, you know, there's some challenges at that, that design level. But I think we communicate this, and that's why I said, you know, we, we do need to communicate very well if this gets implemented and what those are and our intent there. And, uh, we're working on some kind of facts and knowledge-based pages. So, what will be required and, and what is, uh, looked at? We can have that for any builder, architect, designer, resident.
It's going to encourage pervious concrete for outdoor areas. It's going to encourage a lot of grass pavers for driveways and things like that, which would give you more workable, impervious materi, area to work with.
Now, if we can just save some trees.
So, a, a lot of, you know, a lot of my, um, work is in Mobile and in Spring Hill. And I, I would kind of compare Spring Hill to like the older neighborhoods in Fairhope and, you know, the Fruit and Nut and Bluff neighborhoods or whatever, that, um, uh, you know, were not designed or engineered with retention and runoff and all of that. They've just evolved older neighborhoods. And so, in Mobile, we have a, you know, we have a standard of four thousand square feet. So, if we, if, if a project, either addition or a new home is built on a single-family lot, like, you know, in, in Spring Hill and you are not in a engineered subdivision with all of that, so that four thousand feet, once you subtract the, uh, grandfathered-in house, say the house you tore down, the pool deck you took out, the driveway, all your impervial surfaces, you take that out. And if you're adding more than four thousand square feet, we have to have a civil engineer and onsite detention for a single-family residential. I think that's a good thing.
Great.
And we haven't had any limitations, um, you know, trying to find the perfect, and I, I want to say this, there's a lot of things here and it was discussed with the city council. Trying to find the perfect solution to everything has sometimes held us up to making progress. So, we all understand this isn't the perfect solution or anything. We can change anything if it's not working. We can get the, the baby steps to build on if we need to. So, absolutely, let's, let's do something, uh, now and keep building on that.
Do I have a motion to recommend this to city council?
I move, we recommend the city council, uh, approval of the zoning ordinance changes proposed by staff.
Do I have a second? Brother? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.